Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 21st, Trinidad City Planning Commission meeting. We begin with April.
A question for it.
Here.
Michelle Cole.
Here.
Michelle Heaton.
Here.
Michelle Johnson.
Here.
Michelle.
Here. All right, moving on, approval of the minute, May 15th, we do not have yet, but we have July 17th in front of us. Were there any changes, any of the commissioners saw to the July 17th meeting they wanted to make? Be known forever, hold your peace.
To ask what the status of the main minutes is? Of course, they're just delayed.
It's, it was Gabe that was at that meeting, and he's been behind on minutes.
That's fine. Like hours in there, right? I did not see anything that jumped out at me. Anybody, hey? Not then entertain a motion to approve minutes?
Move to approve.
Second, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, passage unanimously. Now that brings us to approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, any of the commissioners or members of the public would like to see to the order of tonight's agenda? See anybody running to the podium? Nobody here, super anxious, nobody online? All right, then. Back to motion to approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, unanimous. All right, moving on now to items from the floor. This is opportunity for members of the public that are present to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes. We ask that you approach the podium or raise your hand or unmute yourself in Zoom world, and now is your opportunity again for items not on tonight's agenda. Right, not seeing anybody online or in person, then we will proceed with tonight's agenda, which is agenda item number one. Trevor, take it away.
All right, so this is your monthly report on the Van Wijk Trail. So since the last meeting, the, as you know, the city council did approve the proposed pedestrian improvements on Edward Street that were presented last month, and city staff were able to meet with the ancestral society who split the project to the city. It's been working with contractor who's doing the H-City project around town currently to add that project as part of that contract. Those will get implemented later this summer. In terms of the trail closure itself, the city council appointed two representatives to meet with the Eurotribe and Ancestral Society in government-to-government meetings, discuss their concerns about the trails that are under the hand, what that means, what that is, before making a decision on the long term.
All right, any, I have one, one question, just kind of on this general topic. This, this G2G meeting has been requested. Has it been scheduled yet? I guess my, and the reason I'm asking is because it comes before us again in September, and it would be super helpful to know that that has happened and have some report outs that we know what has or has not happened before it comes back to us. So if it's not scheduled, is there a way to perhaps encourage and at least express our desire to have some feedback with which to make a more informed decision?
Sure, I did, right after the council meeting, I did suggest that sooner rather than later, so the absence both on for the Van Wijk Trail, but also with the Rantry on Axalin Bridge as well. So it suggests that, I think Cheryl understands, although she's not the one scheduling, but I know it does take time. The tribal councils don't make that often, so that is, that's why I suggest that, you know, I think we're gonna have to propose another closure, because I don't think that's gonna happen.
Any other questions on the Van Wijk Trail?
We have a couple of questions or comments, I think, in some combination of things for first staff and also to discuss amongst ourselves. Like, I wanted to begin with something very close to what you just mentioned, which is the fact that the council is having government-to-government meetings with the tribal entities, and I was wondering, you know, I was really quite impressed, actually, with how decisive the council's action was on the, on the trail closure that went before them at their previous meeting, and I was wondering, you know, what our, what our role is in in whatever action item is going to be discussed to prolong the closure of the Van Wijk Trail. And I was wondering if maybe, since their action was so decisive, that really effective, and I think in a way that's pleasing to all of us, whether there's a way to sort of shunt the action item towards them, instead of having others who have spin-off meetings.
You're talking about when it comes before us again in September, potentially?
Yes, I feel like once again, we're gonna have, we're gonna have presumably some amount of important information inaccessible to us, that perhaps the council will have. You know, once again, it's a rather complex issue that involves a bunch of stakeholders and the planning commission, including the coastal commission, including tribal entities. Coastal commission has formed opinions on this sort of thing, right? So I it seems to me like it's gonna be another one of these sort of exercises in futility where it comes before us and we make decisions without all available information, when maybe, again, the council is better suited for that discussion.
Thoughts?
Questions? Well, you've hit the nail on the head, I think. It is a little frustrating. It's also my understanding that the protocol for government-to-government consultation is pretty strict in terms of who participates and who doesn't.
And what gets reported.
And what gets reported, I'm sure. I, I guess my only comment would be that it would be very useful for the two representatives from the city council who've been appointed for this consultation, that maybe they would be willing to share with us their observations, comments, information as far as they can go. And I could be wrong on how much they can say at this point, but I agree. It would be nice to hear someone from the horse's mouth, so to speak, given that. By the way, who, who, I forget who are the two appointees?
Jack and Steve.
I knew Steve, I didn't, yeah, okay.
And Jack West.
That's what, that's, yeah, okay. So I guess my request would be to try to provide as much transparency as, as possible under the circumstances that they report to us and have a discussion, not a separate report about, you know, what our next, next moves are going to be. I can think.
Isn't that, that's up to the city council?
Well, I, I don't know that it's absolutely a city council issue. I mean, if they, if we request and they volunteer, that would be very useful. They certainly, they'll have to decide. I don't think we're breaking any protocols or any rules or anything like that by requesting.
No, and I did hear, I watched the tape from last week's council meeting. Thank you for you guys for being able to attend in person, and I felt like I did hear a commitment from the council, perhaps a better understanding that they do have an obligation to report out from these G2G meetings. It's different from what they thought they were able to. So I'm hopeful that going forward, there's gonna be communication about things that can be communicated. What, what that will be worth in the future. But I, you know, to your point, Chris, I think, yeah, I agree, you kind of hit the nail on the head. I think that's gonna be really interesting discussion when this comes to force, sounds like next month again, you know, kind of more detailed discussion on the actual action item, what we want to do that day.
I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if they'll have had the G2G.
The, the other thing, of course, is that the city council will meet before our next meeting. So the unlikely event that they do have their meeting, hopefully they would report out at that point, so we might be able to get meet to at least consider as part of our discussion. But certainly is up to all the parties in play as to when that meeting happens, so. We'll see.
Well, I guess to Chris's point, let's, I mean, can we, on the whole project to the?
I, I mean, I would be interested to know the, the thoughts from the entire planning commission on that. I, I don't know, I'd have to talk to the city attorney and look at the code a little bit more closely about, you know, I mean, the, the city council does designate their land use authority to the planning commission. They can take that back, but it might also depend on how the code's written and who has to act on the CDP. But I can certainly have, have a conversation with the city attorney about that if, if as a whole agrees that. It's not necessarily usually recommended. You know, I, I think that the planning commission has more land use expertise in general, but I think this is kind of a, a unique case and involves more political ramifications of the G2G meetings and cultural impacts and liability and insurance and debt time funding.
I mean, yeah, I would agree with your statement that it's much more political than it is user oriented at this point. And I guess my thought is like, there could be, I mean, the last time this trail closure came before us, it was barely voted passed, and it could change, but I would assume that the city would again appeal that decision if that's what happens, which maybe that's good to go through that exercise, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think this is all good discussion. I think it's gonna be a very interesting discussion at the next meeting when this is actually agendized, and, you know, we can delve deep into this, you know, we're kind of flirting a little bit here, I feel, in that territory. So I, I would just kind of maybe, as a commission, do we want to ask Trevor to even find out if there are other options, or do we feel that there are options available to us that with the normal process? We can always defer at the next, we don't have to act on it, we can ask for more information at that point. If we don't have what we need to make a decision, I don't think that, personally, I don't need, feel need to do that tonight necessarily. Because we could be pleasantly surprised, and there could be scheduling, just, you know, alignment that worked, and we really get something along, right?
Could be possible.
Could happen, right? Does that work for everybody? Or?
Yeah, I, I think is, obviously, we find ourselves in kind of a, you know, stuck between a rock and hard spot in some ways. But on the other hand, it's important, though, to keep the record and have the record of all of our actions. So I guess I'm inclined at this point unless something changed based on some view of the law that we would still have to participate, even though we may continue to object to the actions that, that are in front of us, but it's important to still have that.
Okay, that's a fair point. Yeah. I have a couple more questions or comments for, for staff. And the next one is, for some combination of Trevor and Eli, and I think my redundant and repeated statements that trail closures are not maintenance, and that were probably not consistent with policy 64 or well documented. And so to be consistent in applying that opinion, I just wanted to ask whether there was any ongoing maintenance of the Van Wijk Trail. The trail is closed, so there is no ongoing maintenance. Is it closed to the public? Is it closed to public works staff? I mean, is there, is there any maintenance whatsoever? I guess you're asking a question, so we're.
I mean, the only thing is, there is the pipeline project, which is moving the Van Wijk water line to Edward Street. So whatever the construction company would be doing would be the only thing that would happen between the two chains, let's say, a closed trail.
Some maintenance of the trail.
Right, I said, yeah.
And I've got one more thing. And I think, I'm trying not to speak on behalf of the other commissioners here, but I know that there's been in these meetings, some displeasure with, with the discussions of Edward Street as an alternative to the Van Wijk Trail. And so my personal opinion would be that we need not hear about Edward Street updates in part of the Van Wijk Trail updates. Just to sort of acknowledge that opinion, that's at least, particularly, to our project.
I would second that.
I mean, I would say that, I mean, that's, that's fine, but, you know, the, the coastal commission has really been pushing for pedestrian improvements on Edwards as mitigation for the temporary. So in that sense, even as a temporary closure, it, it is related, because otherwise, there's not good safe access from the other part of town until.
Okay. I think, I think it's important that we know that that's a mitigation, maybe a temporary mitigation, I'm not sure. I want the public to think that we're contemplating it as a long-term solution, that we're really not contemplating a long-term solution. I don't know that we are or not, to be honest with you, but there's a possibility that is interpreted that we are contemplating it as a long-term alternative to Van Wijk Trail. If you get any updates.
I may add to this, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, what Trevor was saying is correct. We've been having monthly meetings with the local coastal commission staff, and they see a connection between the two. Otherwise, connecting, you know, whether we do improvements on Edwards to whether or not Van Wijk is going to be closed, we're looking at it as doing two improvements. When I say two, we're looking at it separately. We're looking at it that Edward Street needs to be safer for people to, to go there, and the fact that if Van Wijk is closed in the long term, then the Van Wijk, then the improvements on Edwards would, about moving people, like Trevor was saying, from one side to the other. Otherwise, the city, and that's part of the reason why, we, we're the ones who are requesting to have the G2G meetings with both the Eurotribe and with the CHRI Ancestral Society. The purpose of that is to just see what can we do with Van Wijk, either moving it up slope or making weight improvements where it exists or whatever. We're, we're trying to flesh out from their viewpoint what can be done. So, so we're pursuing both, and it's not like doing Edwards in lieu of Van Wijk.
I have nothing else on that.
I just have a comment on that. Personally, I absolutely hear your frustration and share the sentiment that I personally would like to not see that become a permanent fix. From a commission standpoint, if the applicant wants to update us with their temporary mitigations, it's the applicant kind of providing that information back to it, is how I view it more than, you know, if it were a different project and less, you know, shouldn't have such a lengthy history, you know, I'd be interested to hear update from the applicant. And in essence, I kind of view them as that, because the city is the applicant for this, for the CDP disclosure. But I, you know, I just, I don't know, just my take on that. Any other thoughts?
I mean, I think those, you guys are both making good points, but I just appreciate Chris's, I guess, restating that we, we don't want that to be viewed as a substitute in the law. So I, I think it's just said maybe every time. Just so that way, no one public thinks that, at least Chris and I think that's.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes. I just want to know, there was some public comment and question on this one. It came later in the afternoon, and I've printed out a copy, so we had it in front of them. And it, it speaks to two of the agenda items tonight, from Kathleen Lake and just Kathleen, okay. And she raises some questions just about the transparency, and I don't know if to absolutely put you on the spot, Trevor, but, you know, these meetings that we're hearing about with the coastal commission and the local groups and that kind of stuff, what is the process that that information gets communicated back out to the public, either by what should happen, or what would just be good practice and kind of good policy?
I mean, so, yeah, we have monthly meetings. They are over Zoom, they're not recorded. You know, staff, staff deliberations, staff, you know, administrative drafts of things are not part of the public record, you know, because that, that kind of thought process can kind of muddy, muddy the waters of, of things. But I think I do report out the, the material things that come out of, that come out of those meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree that I've heard you reporting out kind of what you bring back in the consensus of that. Yes, we'll see if that feels like enough, and if not, we can go further. Anything else on agenda item number one? Any comments from the public? We've got a few, one or two online, and a couple in the room, maybe unrelated. Seeing anything online? All right, coming back to us. Anything else for staffs? Agenda item number two, still with Trevor Shout.
So this is a fairly straightforward project. It's just in a little bit of a complicated location, sort of makes things a little bit complicated. So there's a couple issues with it. One is, you know, replacing the septic system. It's a, it's a full new system that's required by the UTS program, is part of the sale of the property. And, but because of the sensitivity of the location, growth in terms of the geologic stability and the, the cultural sensitivity of the area, we're including the review of the septic system as part of the, the CDP, also under coastal act standards. And then the deck is of a size and location that it does require a design review. I think it has animal potential to compact views, but that's, that's part of the purpose of it. So otherwise, it's really mostly a, a internal remodeling for the most part of the house and the exterior maintenance. And there's a lot of maintenance, as I understand it, on the house. It is, as I mentioned, in an area of questionable stability is mapped in the general plan. So they did get a geologist to go out and take some samples and look at the site, found no evidence of, of instability. The new septic system will be located further away from, from the edge of the bluff. It's not really a coastal bluff, because it's above the harbor parking lot, as opposed to the shoreline. So it's not subject to wave erosion and that sort of thing. Actually, the Rantry is retaining all below it right now. So I, I think stability is, is probably not, not much of a factor. And the geologist did have some recommendations about the puddings for the deck to, to make sure it's in native soils, as opposed to some of the fill that's there. And then, so some of the conditions are to have a cultural monitor on site, because as we've met others, there's, some, some resources have been found, none in the area, and none to pervert in the area. And otherwise, it's pretty much understanding conditions of approval. The, you know, the project's not changing setbacks or height or anything like that. And there will be two additional parking spaces that they're adding, a little bit of fill and a short retaining wall, though. Do you all have a parking spot? The project also does require grading permits, so the city engineer will have to review the grading and the whole plan. The design review of view protection findings are written in a manner to allow approval. The neighbors have been notified, so if views might be impacted, if they're exingold, should be worded. And let's see. This project was sent out for a referral. The health department wanted to make sure that the deck, new deck puddings are at least five feet from the perforated portions of the leach line. So that's, that's what's shown here. The part that's under the deck is not perforated line, it's just to get it out, out under the deck. But like I said, the city engineer would like to review the erosion and drainage and erosion control plan. The, the coastal commission did recommend a couple of conditions for this one, one because it's visible, the beaches, trails, open space areas. They recommended a condition that lane has to be watered and shielded to lessen the effect of their properties, and that they, that the applicants acknowledge the risk building in a, in an area that's potentially unstable. So they're pretty standard coastal commission conditions. And then also included the condition for requiring a cultural monitor on site. A few extra maybe pieces for this one, but otherwise.
Right, questions from the commissioners, Trevor?
Oh, and then I might add the, you have an extra sheet on the article that shows the proposed exterior covers. Now, the metal roof was already.
Right, commissioners, what do you got?
I guess, not really being super familiar with like the cultural sensitivity of the area. I mean, you noted that there was no response received from tribal entities when you sent out referrals.
There was no response, but I did, in my, when I sent the referral, I did say that I was assuming that they would want a cultural monitor. So I didn't get confirmation of that. But again, there have been, you know, with, with the city stormwater project, there were, there were actually the resources found during that, that study in the area. And then we know the trail is in the area. So I think that it's just a situation where.
Just have, just a question on the cheap one of one, the site plan. I, I think I understand that there's a two-chamber septic, septic tank, and then there is a sub-tank as well. Is, is that a pump?
Yeah, so it's a shallow, shallow distribution system, let's see, shallow trench pressure distribution system. And so I don't know the exact mechanics. I don't know the exact mechanics of it, but because it's the shallow trench and so it's and the leech lines are going up. Um, so.
It's hard to tell from the pictures. It looks like they're going down. To me.
Well, they should actually go parallel to the slope, but they're at different elevations. Again, I'm not exactly sure, but it was engineered. Um, the, and so.
Well, I I think when you said that it's a shallow system, that that's what I was missing, I think. Okay.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Um, we've not heard from any neighbors. Today. Is Dory Paul still? Um, and then my last question is, actually it's fair questions. Uh, I answered that there absolutely should be a coastal monitor present. I was just curious, uh. What gives the city authority to request that in a condition? Is it? The tail plan or is there? Or this?
Um, so you know, I I think it's something that, um. The city, the city requires for all of its projects at this point, any ground disturbance. Um, you know, I think it's something that has been requested and recognized more and more. And I think it's something that, um, we're probably moving towards having regulatory requirements for. Um, but it is, I mean, it's. In some, so there's no necessarily policy or regulation that says it has to be in there. I think it's just that staff recommended as a condition of approval, just knowing that it's the cultural sensitivity of the area. Um. To remove that condition, you could, if the applicant wants to remove that question. Um, condition, they could request that, um, or appeal the decision to the city council. So you can, I mean, you can request kinds of things and conditions of approval. It's, um, and and the applicant can agree to them or not.
Is there, is there some? Documents, uh. I said the general plan or municipal codes or someplace where cultural monitors are required. I only ask specifically for this project, but because of course we are. Taking to revise the general plan. I'm wondering if that's something that if it's not there, should you bear?
Yeah, I think, again, I think we are moving in that direction. I think with the LCP update, there will be regulatory requirements now, whether it's all for, whether it's for all projects or whether it's certain locations or certain projects. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like. Um, you know, we are. Um, actively working on the cultural resources element. And I don't know, I don't recall exactly how specific that gets, um, for cultural monitors. Um, you know, I think it's, it's not in our general plan now because it wasn't on the grid.
It could be very reasonable for it to be there considering how. Well, seems a lot. Couple of related questions, uh. Since there's going to be ongoing discussion about the bandwidth rail, I'm curious to the recipients of. If there's a report for most cultural monitors, the recipients of that report are and whether it might be something we can use as some, as we discuss. The bandwidth trail, which is just a few hundred feet from there.
Yeah, no, there was, uh, cultural resource reports for the stormwater project as well as the trail project when retaining. So those are, those do exist and redacted versions are in the public.
I can see those. Okay, thanks. And then one question, uh. Why, why the ranch area and, uh? Uh, the tribal entity, your offer.
Okay, did I say? Oh, okay. I just copied that from somewhere. So it should be from. Ranch area, the Europe tribe or the TAF. Okay, thank you.
I have no other questions. Thanks.
I have a few, um. Uh, let's see. I have a question on page sixteen of the packet. You talked about, uh. The notices not received from the tribal entities. I'm just curious. Uh, maybe going forward and for this project, who are? The tribal entities and can we maybe specify those each time just to capture more detail in the record? I think might be a good practice, just that we know exactly who was notified. Um, and then a follow up question on that, um, are it? Who is the entity of the, I guess you said there are tribal commission meetings and and various groups and they have their meeting schedule. Are we noticing them? In a realistic timeframe that allows them the opportunity to provide comment on these projects? Or perhaps are we missing their meeting cycle and do we need to adjust something? In our process to make sure that they have the opportunity within their guidelines to be able to comment on stuff?
So when I send out referrals, I send them to the tippos, the tribal historic preservation officers. Um, and, um. Following the protocols for Humboldt County and other entities, if the referrals provided two weeks, however, they do say if. More time is needed, that can be requested.
So they have the opportunity and a mechanism to ask for more time for them. Okay, perfect. Um, all right. And then that that parking space that's going on the right hand corner, the little expansion they're doing. That doesn't take away a potential reserve septic area. It looks far too small to be that. That was my one comment because I noticed there's no. So that makes me a little nervous to.
I did ask that of the health department and, um. They didn't seem to have concerns about that. There is minimal room for reserve area, but that location there would not be an ideal location.
And then I had a question early in the packet. You're talking about making a dark sky compliant. And then condition number eight, where you specify that. Should there be the phrase dark sky compliant? Does that hold? Is there a certification? Is there an entity that that signs off and says, because if we're going to head that way potentially as a city? You know, as we revisit those sections.
I, you know, I. Was probably thinking how lazy when I said dark sky compliant. There is an organization and they have recommended best practices and that's what that is.
Okay.
Um, I lose the specific worry, but the coastal commission.
That's all I have. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a general comment that, I mean, I appreciate the applicant coming to. Upgrade their septic system. Every time someone's upgrading their septic system from a failing system, that's great for. Me and it seems like they took into account the high visibility. Of that property with their choice of improvements. Because I appreciate that. A lot that went into that. I noticed that, I mean, the house is very visible and it definitely has heard maintenance on it. So. To missing it's. Maintenance has been for, excuse me, uh, so.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Uh, if there's an opportunity, if you'd like to speak to the commission, you welcome that. We'll open up to you.
Um, sure.
Then we'll go to public comment. You don't have to.
Uh, no, we just came up and, you know, we're really excited to be able to actually obtain this property. And, you know, contribute to the Steve Trinidad and we make a place that, you know, the whole town finds appealing. Um, like when you talk about dark sky compliant fixtures, my husband's an electrician. We totally understand that. I'm in construction myself and stuff and everything. So, you know, we really want to have respect for, uh, anything that the community has to say. And come in as, you know, someone that really, um, wants to be a part of the community. And so we appreciate all your comments and definitely take them forward. So.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant from the commission? Alright, thanks.
Thanks. Pleasure to meet you all.
Okay, we'll open up to public comment if there's any. Person online and then I think we've accounted for everybody in the room with us.
I think it was the agent.
My name's Sarah Atkins. I'm just the agent, uh, for Kelly. Uh, so no comments here, just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, now I'll bring it back to us. Any further discussion from the commissioners? Ready to entertain a motion. I'm happy to make. Okay, all right. Uh, based on the application materials, information, findings included in the staff report and based on public testimony. I find that this product is consistent with the Trinidad LCP. Another applicable regulations and I move to adopt the information and require designer view, view protection findings in the staff report and approve the project as described in the staff report as conditioned herein with a special note to modify condition number nine. To more generally state, the cultural monitor not have the specific reference to the ranch area. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passage unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda eleven hundred three. Vegetation removal.
So as promised of the last meeting, um, this. Uh, staff is proposing, um, to remove vegetation along the proposed alignment at the bottom of the. Um, excellent memorial trail. Um, the purpose of the vegetation removal is to. One, it it would help prepare the the trail for eventual public use. But the the purpose at this point is to, um. Be able to have better access, um, for staff to look at the site, the topography. Um, wet areas. And then primarily the, um, transition of the bluff to the beach. It's, it's, as you see in the photos there, it's, it's very thick vegetation. It's difficult to get access, take measurements, those sorts of things. So the intent is to get that cleared up a little bit, um. Basically following the proposal of from RCA. Um, it was originally intended to to get that portion of the trails open. Um, but we have to figure out a way to get people safely to the beach. So, um, this is the first step in that that process. Um, so. Let's see this, um, and I I I provided a little background and and history in there that you guys are probably pretty. Um, familiar with. Um, staff is also proposing to place fencing at at the toe of the slope. Um, similar to the same as what's at the bottom of the existing alignment. Um, to keep people from trying to climb back up the slope, which. Could cause additional erosion. And again, it's a, it's a safety issue as as well. Um, so that is part of the CDP, um. The, the project, um. As written in here again, is is consistent with general plans, I mean, ordinance provisions. Um, as the coastal act. The, because it's located in the Turri study area, um, within the open space area. Any new structures and vegetation removal requires use permit. Use permit findings are in there. Um, fence also requires designer view because it's a structure. So those findings are in there as well. Um, and then finally it requires the policy sixty nine. Was of the. The historic preservation officer, the Trinidad Ranch area and the colonial descendants, Charai. And Charai are the ones who, um. Been working with them. City staff has to some. Tell us proposal. Um, so they are in support. Uh, we, I have sent a letter off to the shippo, um, to. Wisconsin current. As well, and then the the city council meeting last week, Grant, they requested government to go in the competition on this. So, um. Should be a condition there that we see all those, um. So yeah, so if people turn down entry and shipos, she'll be. Mencing and then the same condition, but the other fence is that it's only authorized. Um, remain as long as the trail closure remains in effect or until the. That is the project being proposed and we're outside in the, um, just about outside. The nesting season. So that shouldn't be an issue like it was, um, last. The swallows are still over there, but August fifteenth, August fifteenth, it depends on the species, August fifteenth to September first is usually. No, the end of the window. Um, and it is something that could occur during what season. So. Take a little bit of time to get a meeting with Ranch area tribal council, but I don't think that. Work is just proposed. Not soil disturbance, um. So it's not expected to. Direction.
Thank you, Trevor. Questions for Trevor? Commissioners.
Um, I'll kick it off, um. So the proposed. Area where we, where they intend to take the vegetation or remove the vegetation. Um. Do we have any understanding or background as to why that particular route? Is been chosen? I understand that it is the traditional trail alignment. But, um. Is that really the? As I say this way, is is that indeed the only recourse we have? Or are there other, uh, paths to the beach that would be less complicated? And, uh, and still accomplish what the ancestral society would want to do. And the city would want to do or at all the entities included.
I would say that. A third alternative access has not been explored. Um. The. We do know that the ancestral society will not support improvements on the existing alignment. And because of policy sixty nine, there's really, it's kind of a dead end. Um, the, the rock has always been seen as being an important component of the exit of this trail. Um, because it protects the base of the bluff there. There's less erosion there. It provides a stable, um, access point. There has been some additional erosion that has separated that rock from the bluff. And that's how, where we need to figure out to to get people. But so that that rock has always been kind of the the key for the exit of the trail. And we have not.
I guess. Yeah, uh, so. There was the report that was prepared by GHD and, uh, in the report, working with the, uh. Sure, ancestral society, uh, GHD and, uh. Came up with this particular pack. Uh, so it's been identified as a traditional path. And 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 that's our city engineer was actually the lead on that. It's not like. You know, he was doing it on behalf of the city. He was doing it as a separate project. So otherwise. We we certainly can't go any further from, uh. Of the current position of the trail. And, uh, when you go. Any further west from the proposed section of the trail, that seems to get even more dicey. Because, uh, that I think is more of the area where if you look at the top where it is eroding, I think it's going down pretty much. Lower. And and in between the two, it's, it's the same, uh, draw between where the existing. Trail is and where the traditional trail is. So when you're down there, there isn't any spot that you could really look at that looks like it's going lower or be. Uh, more gradual and possibly, uh, less intrusive approach. So it just leaves us with, uh, these two and and the, uh. And because it is in the study area that sure I, uh, said that, uh, they're concerned with the existing one. Uh, you know, even beyond the fact that it is safe, but, uh, that it's unsafe rather. The safety issue. But, uh, you know, also that people tend to somehow meander off of that. We, uh, and get further into the, uh, area, sensitive areas. So. So it just makes sense that if we're going to be doing some improvements, that we do them in where the traditional area is, uh, the Turri. Like to see it done there, uh, and we we just are concerned about how can we get to having the closed trail to come up? And and whatever steps we can take in that direction to get it open, that's what we're pursuing.
I'll also add that um there were several studies done um when the trail was originally. You know, improved in ninety seven, ninety eight, um, and I imagine there's a reason that it didn't go straight down, um, that they both. So. Off either east or west, um. And I I think the part of the importance of the public, uh, the the traditional alignment, as Eli mentioned, is that. The traditional alignment is not going to have cultural resources underneath it, um, so it's a is the ideal location for the trail.
Just that. Um, I would be concerned that uh or am concerned that once we clear the brush, that we're going to find. That maybe that isn't the. The answer. Solution to this, which would be unfortunate, and I don't know if there's an alternative that we've. Been able to. Identify.
So, um. Approximately. Maybe three months ago, uh, we had a meeting with RCA A. And myself and Sarah Lindgren of the Ancestral Society. And we were present the whole time with the crew from RCA A, which at that point was two people. But uh, they followed. The way that that path would be, they used the machete and they cleared through that area. Uh, and 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 it seemed peaceful, uh, and and logical, other than. There is a certain point where there is some drainage and it may need some kind of a so-called land bridge or just science. Uh, to to cross over that area, but other than that, it seemed quite feasible. Uh, until they got towards the bottom and and then they realized that there's no real connection. Uh, to the beach, to that boulder, because originally there was like a little land bridge to the boulder. Uh, and there still is a land bridge to the boulder, only it's about maybe a foot and a half wide. So people can't really navigate that, and that's why we're looking at how can we safely get people down there. And uh, and and GHD has been looking to our city engineer about the short-term fix and uh. It it may not be exactly as the long-term fix, but it'll be in the same area and it's just, uh. You know, how how we get people safely. He was indicating our city engineer about, you know, what could be done with the boulder and to connect with the boulder and. Uh, having some kind of uh steps uh or uh some kind of a bridge. Makes sense though. But but yes, if if RCA A uh with the presence of the Turri and myself, uh, hadn't, you know, used the machete and gone down. The the way the act is intended, uh, then I might have more of the concerns that you have.
So thanks for the.
I've got a related question if the, if you don't mind, um. Again, it's it's somewhat unclear to me, um. Based on information we've gotten and this discussion now, whether. I forget where we where we encountered this term, right, but there's this goal to get down to the nucleus of the village sites, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I've heard nucleus somewhere as we've.
Well, so the the nucleus of the village itself is um. At to the east of this trail, and so that's part of the concern of the existing alignment is that it takes people too close. That we're we're.
Yeah, so I guess I'm. Confused at the moment then whether the goal is to. Just get people away from the most sensitive regions at the toe of the bluff, or whether there's actually. Profound sort of spiritual cultural meaning to to exiting the bluff at that rock. Because I mean, if there's this, again, sorry, if you ever encounter this term, if there's this nucleus, like how wide is this nucleus, could we? Theoretically go ten fifteen feet west or ten fifteen feet east, is the goal really to terminate the trail at that rock? Or just be further away from the most sensitive areas?
I think it's both, I would say, um, it's actually primarily to get it back to the traditional alignment again, because. Um, you know, there would not be. Burials or other resources that would be located right along the alignment, um, for one, and two, it is a ceremonial trail, it is a tribal cultural resource, so the traditional.
That rock is part of that, to your knowledge?
That would be my, that's my understanding.
I've got a handful of questions, but I'll defer to those those sort of pressing related. Is that, is it possible to? Assess the condition of the proposed trail with remote sensing like IR mapping or something, I mean, that's probably rather deceptive, but. It's hassleled and butchered the trampling and a sensitive barrier, machetes and chainsaws.
I, you know, I did ask about, well, this was more in terms of mapping the the bluff and stability and and bluff movement, but I was asking if, you know, that could be done with. You know, a drone or a light hour or something like that, and I think that at a broad scale, um. You know, that would be more feasible, but you know, at this very small scale, um, that is not. My option.
And then this is my last question, but it's. It's my most verbose question, and I'm going to, sorry, return to the topic of trail maintenance. And I think there's a number of reasons to be concerned about the lack of maintenance on the on the trail at the moment. Uh, for example, from the bottom of the existing trail, you can see the English IV creeping into uh where the trail used to be, and I think that more generally, there's. There's this lack of maintenance that's potentially harming both the environmental and cultural resources in the area surrounding uh the present. Not prospective alignment of the trail, uh, but I'm also concerned because at our January seventeenth meeting, uh, Mr. Gallegos came in, legal counsel for the TAS. And I thought that that was a a really informative and um. Really compelling uh appearance, uh, but in the letter that he shared. Uh, there was a following statement, and I'll read it from that letter directly. Uh, "The extensive damage to the trail over the years through missing steps, extreme erosion, and the use of voluntary trails to go around the lower portion of the trail. Makes, quote, 'short-term repair impossible without extensive ground disturbing activities.' This does not fall under emergency permitting and is subject to policy sixty nine, as this is an entirely new project. Uh, the lower portion of the trail no longer exists and therefore is beyond its seasonal maintenance as described in the TNP and no longer exempt from the coastal development permit." Whether uh we believe that feature or not, I'm I'm aware of the possibility that a lack of maintenance might be used to rationalize, sorry, to rationalize prolonged or continued closure of the trail. And I mentioned all of that because this plan is going to be uh before tribal entities. And so I wanted to at least introduce the possibility that this permit also allows for continued maintenance and repair, including vegetation removal and perhaps stair repair. For the existing trail from at least the entrance to the point where the current trail intersects with the proposed trail. If there is the potential for objection. To ground disturbing activities, we should maybe. Explore those objections now.
Yes, so being on site with uh Sarah Lindgren of the Turri Ancestral Society. And at a prior meeting, we also were on site with her and we shared a growth vault from the UROC tribe. And along with another person from, I think their trails, uh, person or one of their trails people uh from the UROC tribe. Um. Yeah. For a short-term fix, uh, they all seem to be fine with the fact that, uh, you know. Leading up to where we would uh divert to the traditional trail. That whatever improvements needed to be made in the interim, meaning replacing some steps, uh, that that would be fine. Uh, because the uh, the long-term trail will still follow that same path all the way down. And uh, and knowing that if we do want to open it in the short term, we want to make it safe so that people do not trip on their way down because. Uh, either the steps were missing or the steps needed repair.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, that was long and rambling, um, but I guess I'll sort of explicitly ask whether there's interest in. Um. Amending the CDP to also allow for things like stair replacement or vegetation removal on the existing trail so that. It's something that tribal entities have the opportunity to discuss.
I mean, I. There there was some um vegetation maintenance um earlier in the summer. In order to allow RCA to get down the trails, um, that did occur. I, we haven't really discussed whether to start on maintenance of the rest of the trail, um. Yeah, my hesitation on that would be that um it would encourage people to try and go around the fencing and use the trail, um, if it looked really clear and maintained. Um, and you know, replacing steps now. Is is that really the best timing to to do things? I, we haven't really discussed. But I mean, you you are right in that. There is an amount of deferred maintenance that then crosses the line and not being maintenance. But I I think. What, you know, but in this area, almost anything requires a CDP. And so at some point, we're going to have to come back for a CDP to to do those improvements at the bottom, and that would be the time to include the the steps and and things like.
Well, to the, to that last comment, if. If what would be done would be to repair existing trail infrastructure. Why would that require a CDP? Just replacement of existing development?
Because almost any re. Repair within fifty feet of or on a bluff is going to require a CDP. So repair and maintenance, there are. Um, in the coastal act, there's an exemption for repair and maintenance, but then in the regulations, it kind of qualifies what repair and maintenance requires. So things on a beach and seventy feet of a bluff, um, those sorts of things. Even if they're repair and maintenance.
So it'd be necessarily easy to slip some stair repair. Terms into this.
I mean, you are issuing a CDP, um. I would recommend against that because again, we would, I think, you know, the the. Policy sixty nine does not really differentiate between maintenance and, you know, I don't know. How the city has dealt with stair repairs in in the past and whether it has gotten those policy sixty nine approvals or policy sixty nine says. There shall be no soil disturbance without, and so, you know, even replacing stairs, I think, is soil disturbance, um. So. And the way I've described this, um, you know, to the ancestral society and the shipo, adding additional soil disturbance might. Wherever you notice.
Just to that point, that, I mean, I I appreciate the, but I think you're intended to try and pack as much opportunity into the CDP as possible. Um, personally. I think, given for me, the sensitivity of this area, um. And all the interested parties, I would not be in support of adding more things in like that, I feel like the noticing and the work proposed is very specific and very narrow. And I think that's probably, I I I'm going to guess what helped get all parties to agree to move forward with this in that. Again, while I appreciate the desire to have as many drawers possible to open the toolbox, so to speak, that we've only got a three-door toolbox here and to add a couple more would be. Would feel disingenuous to me, regardless of the intent, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I I fully appreciate that, I also am sort of fearful of a bridge-to-nowhere type situation where. We suddenly find out that there is opposition to some aspect of. Of maintaining or repairing the upper part of the trail, which, I mean, and I'm I'm just totally speculating, and that may not be a reasonable thing to do, but I'm fearful of this.
I appreciate that, I happen to have the management plan open, it is one of the documents I went back to to get ready for this meeting and very consistently stated in there specifically this trail as a desire by. Task to have this reopened and have it realigned to the traditional path, so I feel like at least since two thousand and seven. From a documentary, yeah, entry standpoint, and and I feel like that's been a consistent message.
I agree with, I agree with you. Awesome.
Well, I had a uh similar question, I guess. I mean. And maybe it's already been answered, but. So when, you know, when the brush is removed, we'll be able to get down to the edge from the top and the bottom. I mean, surely there's already a couple of designs floating around and the discussion. Of what, how we want to create this temporary fix to get. From the bluff edge onto the rock or down to the beach next to the rock or something like that, and I guess. My comment or question, well, mostly a comment, I guess, was like. I sort of wish that in this permit. Those, say there's three different options that are getting floated around and we need to remove the brush to figure out which one is the best one. Like, I wish those had been packed in here so that way into this CDP. And obviously, it's too late now, but. Um. Just so that way, it's like, okay, we remove the brush. We've got these three options that are already permitted from a planning standpoint, not from an engineering standpoint or something like that, but. And then it's like, okay, we, now it's clear to us, option two is the one to use, and we could just do it instead of it having to come back to us and like go through this whole process again. I guess I wish it was more of a package deal, um, and to go and include it. Means for the steps, but um, that's more of my comment, uh. More of a comment than a question, I, and then a follow-up comment that's um somewhat related. I, or maybe it's a request, um, so that, is that, when we do get the brush cleared and. Powers that be are deciding what the best approach to get from the block down to the beach is near the rock or on the rock. Um. I think Richard made a good point at our previous meeting a month ago. That, you know, we've got the city engineer involved and engineers like to engineer things and. I would request that. A is present who might have like a more practical, simpler approach to. To make solving that solution, and I guess I request that because. Given that that's an area that receives a lot of wave action, storm action, maybe there's some instability, whatever. I think having a simple solution there can benefit the city tremendously in the long term because as we've seen in, like, the Van Wijk trail. When city infrastructure fails, it becomes a liability for the city. And if you have a really complex thing that's super engineered, it still could fail, and if it's more complex, it's going to make it more difficult to fix, and it's so it. I guess all I'm asking for is just like, you know, try to keep it simple, at least with the temporary solution, obviously, we haven't seen a long-term solution yet, um. And I I just don't know that the engineer solution is going to be the best solution, so just I would like to keep that. Other voices in the room, who might have other. Deal for that. It will benefit the city. Liability standpoint and the residents from being able to use the trail without it getting closed.
I think that's a, a, a good point. I think it would be good to have RCA included in the discussions. And I'll also note that Mayor Kelly has reached out to state parks. They've recently been doing some work at College Co. in their locations and it's, it's going to consult with them on the pair of options as well, so.
I'm just thankful that it's moving forward and that it's going to build as fast as possible. It's not that tricky to build a trail. But I do see in the Google map there where it's called Trinidad Bay Memorial Park. Notice that?
I did, yes.
Is there, is there an official name on that?
I don't know. I don't think the city adopted it.
I, I'm thinking they're referring to where at the top where the civic club had the lighthouses where they have the, all of the names the people lost at sea. That that's like a memorial park there. I just don't know about the words Trinidad Bay.
It's on the, it's on the, it's in the paperwork. You can pull it up and see it. But yeah, just, just pointing it out that you might want to look at that at some point. Because it does kind of look like it's down in the hill.
I, I do know, I mean, there's a lot of errors on Google Maps in Trinidad. And I know the city's been trying to get some of them fixed for many years to know.
Great, thanks. Just to toss my, that's a great catch. I did happen, I have Google Maps and I clicked on it and there's a bunch of different pictures, one of which does include the lost at sea plaque, but there's a phone number, 677-0101. I have no idea who that is. It might be somebody to follow up and find out who answers that number. And see if that's the civic club. I don't know. I don't think they know about that. I had a couple of questions and comments. Like Tom said, I'm encouraged that there's progress and I see this request as movement forward on something that I personally have been incredibly frustrated by for the length this has been in front of us. And so I kind of see this as, you know, let's get this vegetation cleared so that then we can see what is or isn't there, what may or may not be concerning. It is interesting, though, in reviewing the management plan, there's a bullet point in here on page 57 that talks about rerouting the lower portion of the trail as possible over the areas highly saturated and bluffing this area is also failing. In addition, this route would require extensive arming of the surface with rock and the need of a bridge structure approximately 30 to 40 feet in length. Therefore, the project is possible to be costly. I'm just curious if that was a bridge to the existing rock? Was this identified in 2007? And just, I don't know, we're moving forward. That's great, but maybe there was a missed opportunity to have learned some stuff from the past.
I believe that bridge is over, I think they call it Spurwood Creek that is what comes out there. So I think that's what that bridge is. I, I don't know whether they actually, you know, how much they dug on the ground.
Yeah, I don't know if any of the parties that were involved at them would have any recollection, not that it would have any significant meaning. I did have a comment on the use permit findings on packet page 44. Under number three, you talk about noxious odor, special emissions, noise, glare, dust and odor. In the RCA bid, they specifically mentioned the use of chainsaws. So I didn't know if that needed to be changed there. I would recommend that it does get changed, just that way what we're proving reflects what RCA is saying they're going to be using tool-wise. So there's no surprise, hey, you said it was no noise or emissions. But there are, you know, from a chainsaw. I think that was really the only thing that jumped out at me, they're using electric chainsaws. Could be, could be electric chainsaws. You're absolutely right. I assume that their bid does not specify that internal combustion engine.
You could reword that to be, you know, short-term temporary use of.
Just suggesting that this project will not involve any long-term emissions.
You could say it's not going to cause noise, dust or, or glare, dust and odor. Noise will be short-term temporary.
I don't have anything else. I didn't get any from the commissioners. And then we'll open it to the public. I don't see anybody online or in the room anymore. And that can bring it back to us. Although I do want to note, there was public comment again from Kathleen Lake on this. Just commenting that any extension to the CDPs allowing our trails to continue to be closed have become a regular occurrence and must stop. She's advocating for denial of the CDP tonight to not allow continued fencing of the actual memorial trail. There's an easement granted by the Coastal Conservancy. And then again, a request for communication with the Coastal Conservancy and their stance on the actual memorial trail. And then a request also to continue to report out, you know, I think we had specifically about trail maintenance and I think there was some discussion about that tonight that I'm comfortable with. First, I wanted to make note that we did receive that one comment and I see Eli coming up.
I just wanted to note regarding the Coastal Conservancy that they are a member of the Chirai Management Team. So whenever we have a Chirai Management Team meetings, they're present. So, so their viewpoint is reflected in this meeting.
And again, I think I would, I would suggest not to put words in Kathleen's mouth, but that it's getting report outs of detailed things that can be reported out is, I know, I personally feel like that's been missing and I have not heard a whole lot of that from TMT meetings. I recognize the cultural sensitivities and things that actually cannot and should not be reported out, but I think there are things that probably could and should get reported out that don't fall into the, the lack of the more proper word, protected information. And I think that's a big opportunity for the city to make huge strides forward. I encourage them to continue to work towards that. I sound like a commitment from Mayor Kelly at the council meeting to do that. I hope that finding a seat at those tables necessarily, it sounds like that whoever is at those tables for these meetings does understand the direction from the mayor and report that information out. So.
All right. So I, I do have a kind of an unrelated, but maybe related question. It has to do with city manager. I know that Eli will be retiring soon. But, and that I believe happens next month. Is that correct, Eli?
My existing contract ends in September, and that was the original intent. However, I did indicate to the council that I'd be willing to stay month to month. I believe we'll have that on the agenda for the September meeting until we transition and someone in place.
That was exactly my concern. So thank you. I appreciate that. I just was looking for a point of contact if and when you were not around because this would fall in the cracks very quickly. So, thank you.
Anything else from the commissioners? It's not them, I think. Ready to entertain a motion? Going to take a stab at it. Nobody else is raring to. Okay, I would just.
You've got language for that.
Yeah, I had just kind of generalized that I can chime in when we get to that at the end of the motion here. I was just going to say changes to the use permit findings, number three, to reflect the potential for short-term use of tools with the brush clearing. All right. Based on application material and information included in the staff report and based on public testimony, I find that this, that the project is consistent with the city certified LCP. Other applicable regulations, and I moved to adopt the information in this staff report and approve the project as described in this staff report and as conditioned therein with changes to use permit findings, number three, to reflect potential for short-term use of tools and with the brush clearing. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. All right, passage unanimously, five zero. All right, I have an agenda here. Commissioner reports. Any commissioners with things to report on?
Should we just for the record mention that we contacted the council for prior to the previous meeting, that many of us were attendants for that. I don't know if it matters, but.
I'm not clear on all your.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, just, just so that it's in the minutes someplace, should we mention that, you know, you on our behalf drafted a memo to, to the city council and many of us were attendants for their previous council meeting?
Sure, yeah. I mean, yeah, the, the, based off our previous meeting, I drafted a letter from the commission to the council. And it was submitted as, as comment for their consideration during their review of the appeal or the action, the appeal of the for denial. And then also that four of the five commissioners were present in the room that night as members of the audience. Anything else from commissioners? All right, staff report, Trevor.
I lead through my backlog of applications, I think. Two small ones coming up. So I'm able to, and I got through with, with REEP and the OBC grant stuff. So now I'm back to working on the LCP update. So I submitted a draft visitor services to the coastal commission. I started to work on the, the safety element and incorporating some of our recommendations from the maybe coastal resiliency plan into the safety element. Also, I have something working on the cultural resources element, addressing tribes. So working on those things. Trevor took a new job and is still working with the city on a few hours a week to focusing on little BTS permits. So I'm still working. Yes, permits.
Questions? Nope. Any updates on future agenda items? Just the one I added last week or last month about the land use. I'm still gathering information on that. Reached out to a few people to try and draft ones and then give this to Trevor so we can kind of try and get that still proceeding.
I was just going to mention for that particular item that if you go to HCOG, I don't know, I'm pretty sure that the HCOG, the full council has one, but the SS TAC clearly has one. That's the social services tag. Has a pretty good one. And also RCA has one as well, and, and they're almost the same, you know, might be something that was adopted across. But, yeah, there, there are two of them there. So if you want to look there, there's a place to start.
It's great. Anything else for future agenda items? All right, in that case, I believe we are adjourned.